They just, the time changes at one now, and that's even better. Well, that, and it'll be warmer. I also too, some people, they had their struggles too. And like it or not, without Kelsey in center, like, he has all that experience. I'm not saying that he, you know, tush much, that's not what I'm getting at. I mean, as part there, but he had all that experience, he didn't like the look of the drunks, he was like, switch it up, like. Yeah, for sure. With that chicken wing necklace he had.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order and ask for the calling of the roll once again.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Prethert?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snidely?
Here.
We will now do the pledge of allegiance, if you'd like to join, you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Okay, we'll move then to the agenda, can I have a motion to approve it?
Can I make a motion to add section A for appointments to boards and committees?
Okay, and that's on, that would be under public participation, are there any other additions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much. So, we will move then to appointments to boards and commissions, we have an unexpired term on the Public Arts Commission ending in 2026.
I'd like to nominate Bobby Burke.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. This time, we will move to public comments, and anyone who would like to address council about items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be your time to address those to council, we'd be glad to hear from you. Just come up and give us your name and where you live, and you'll get up to five minutes. I don't see anybody jumping up. All right, we will move then to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve it?
Same move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are any items needing removal? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved, we'll move to resolutions, you may read the first one.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Playground Equipment Services for the construction of the Mary Day Playground Project for a total cost not to exceed $100,500.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Same move.
Second.
And it's been seconded, and you're gonna do this one, Jessica?
I'll cover this, Casey's out tonight at a youth sporting event, so. This is a bit of cleanup with Community Development Block Grant, we are supposed to bring to you our contract to enter into, an agreement to enter into a contract, and so this is a little bit of cleanup for the grant documentation. In 2023, City Council passed Resolution 7547 to allow our Community Development Block Grant Funds to support a new playground at Mary Day Park. Parks Recreation Department did do a request for proposals in February 2024, and they received five proposals, of those, they selected Playground Equipment Services based on scoring, and to the staff's recommendation to enter into a contract with Playground Equipment Services for a contract not to exceed $100,500 for the purpose of building the Mary Day Playground.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item for council? Okay, councilors? So, the project looks good. Very nice, and I think it's in an area that is needed, there's a lot of kids there in that area, and they don't really have a good place to play.
And I would say that we, we looked at one point about, like, go, should we rezone this to install, and we said, what about the park, and it could've been easy to say, yeah, but we'll improve the park and not do it, so I really appreciate that there was the follow-through within a few years to improve the playground.
Absolutely right. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Resolution is adopted, we'll move to the second one.
A resolution to accept the recommendation of the Oxford Recreation Board and name the new Oxford, or sorry, name the new dog park facility Barkham Park.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt it?
Same move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug?
Yes, as you know, the city is constructing a new dog park on Bottom Road across from Leonard Howe Park. This park will be approximately three times the size of our existing one on 732. Recreation Board met, came up with a couple names, I asked Casey to go back and come up with one recommendation for city council, and they've done that, and so they're recommending that we call the new dog park Barkham Park, and I would recommend that council adopt this resolution.
This is obviously one of the more important things that we're gonna do.
It is.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this pressing issue? Okay, councilors? Everybody okay with Barkham Park? I think it's clever as can be. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Barkham Park it is. And you may read the third.
A resolution of the City Council Subcommittee recommending the dispersment of the community assistance funding in the 2025 proposed budget.
Okay, is there a motion?
Same move.
Second.
And seconded, thank you very much. Jessica?
Good evening, councilors. This year, City Council kind of gave a directive to staff that they wanted to have a different way to approach the community assistance programs, and so we formed a Subcommittee of Council, and that group met on September 10th to review the applications that came in, so we notified all of our nonprofit partners, we posted on the City e-newsletter, we had it on the city website, saying all nonprofits serving Oxford are welcome to apply. In 2024, City Council awarded a little over $157,000 for Community Assistance Program, and this did include $31,200 for the public Wi-Fi program. The Subcommittee then reviewed this year all the applications, and there were over $207,000 requested, and they are recommending a breakout of $160,674, and there's a chart in there with the breakout of each organization, this will be included, excuse me, included in the budget work session on Thursday, we thought it was important for the Subcommittee to bring forward the breakout of how they thought awards should be distributed, and I'm, the Subcommittee can speak, or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and this is on page 40, 41 of your agenda, if you have it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Come on up, just give us your name and where you live, we'll give you five minutes.
Hi, my name is Susie Hummel, I live out on 73 on Hickory Hill Drive. I'm here on behalf of TOPPS, I'm the president of TOPPS, the Oxford, Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services, I just want to say thank you, we are so grateful for your support and your continued partnership, as I've said before here, I think, and some of you have heard in, in different presentations I've given, in July of 2022, we served 176 unique families. Fast forward two years, in August of 24, that number rose to 504 unique families, so the demand for our services has nearly tripled in just two years, so we're very grateful for your support, and we want to continue being great partners with the city, thank you.
You're very welcome. For those that may not know, TOPPS is not only our food pantry, but also the Family Resource Center in Oxford. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council on this resolution? All right, councilors?
So who all were our Subcommittee, again?
Jason and Mike?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Chantel. You know, it's unfortunate we can't give everybody everything they want, but I think you did a pretty good job from what I could tell.
And I'm glad that we could budget, I mean, if you look at taking the Wi-Fi out, it's $33,000 more dollars than we budgeted last year.
Yeah.
Which I was hoping, A, we would not only allocate, but that we would be able to increase, and the fact that we were able to do both is really terrific.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. Everybody good? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted, and we will move to the fourth and last resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Butler County Community Development Block Grant for $126,370 for a new construction of a playground.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Same move. Second.
And it's been seconded. Jessica?
Good evening again. Each year, the city of Oxford is entitled to 10% of the Butler County's Community Development, or Community, oh, Butler County Community Block Grant funding, and, but each year, we have to submit our requests for their approval. These projects are generally for capital projects almost always, and there's a list of what it can be used for and where it can be used, and in 2025, we can apply for $126,000, or 126,300, I can't talk to that. $126,370, 20% of that may be used for grant administration, and 80% may go to a direct capital cost. In 2025, we reviewed lots of different ideas, we had talked in the past about housing, but when we apply for this funding now, we will not get it until, like, October of next year, and so it's really hard to, and also, the dollar amount we get is not quite enough to be used for an undetermined housing project. So we looked at what we could do, and we are recommending, you know, Casey has an entire playground improvement plan, the, we call it the toddler playground at the community park, is over 20 years old and could use a refresh, and so we are recommending that the toddler playground near the concession stand at the Oxford Community Park be replaced, this is an eligible area based on the mapping that the county provides for us, and the budget would allow us to do a new playground in that area.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you, councilors?
It's playground night.
Yeah, playground night.
And it dates me to think that that, like, my kids played on that when they were toddlers, and it's knees replacement already, so, time flies.
Dates me that I just finished being mayor when the park was completed. So, long time ago. All right. Anyone have any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That resolution's adopted, we'll move to ordinances, we don't have any first readings, we do have two second readings.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Oxford Municipal Code by revising a chapter of Part 7, Business Regulation Code, Chapter 744, revising the tobacco retailer license requirements for the sale of tobacco and paraphernalia products in the city of Oxford.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Same move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, this is on page 48 of your agenda, if you have it, and Sam, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you. No changes since the first reading, and Ben Rodigum, our new employee, was here to just help you see who was gonna be out there working with the retailers, and this has an effective date of January 1st, so we are already starting to get everything lined up for that, and.
Have you heard any comments at all from the public on it?
We had one on the fee, the fee amount of $250, which is in the fee ordinance, which we haven't voted on yet for, same as last year, but, but really, most people that we've talked to that are local, owners of businesses have, are expecting us to, you know, move forward with it.
Some of the larger companies, the corporate entities are kind of hard to get a hold of,
but it seems like it's gonna be okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Council, have any further comments from last week? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethert?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, seven zero, we'll move to some, number two.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number five, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Same move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
Good evening, mayor and councilors, we do have one change this evening, we have increased the expense in the capital improvement fund by $8,000. It was determined at the end of the Aquatic Center season that there was a sand filter that needed to be replaced, that was bad, and with the budget of $25,000 in the 2024 capital improvement budget for the Aquatic Center, there was a remaining amount of $7,897 that was unspent, with an additional 8,000, this will allow for the replacement of that sand filter in 2024, and then reserve the anticipated budget for 2025 for additional maintenance.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, council? The full list is on pages 70, 71 of your agenda. Any other questions or comments? Okay, call it.
Mr. Prethert?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes, this ordinance is adopted. That's 15 minutes, murder. Moving to announcements and communications, so I will start with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. So, the city of Oxford received a letter on October 4th stating that Energy Harbor was acquired by an affiliate of Vistra Corporation, the letter explained that Energy Harbor will be assigning our electric aggregation contract to its affiliate brand Dynegy Services East LLC. Dynegy will honor all the terms of our agreement with Energy Harbor at the same price and other contract terms which we now have. A letter will be sent by the supplier to each electric aggregation participant notifying them of this change, the customer bill will then state that generation service is provided by Dynegy, so the city will post this information on our webpage in anticipation of participants inquiring about this change, and I also shared with council that Dynegy's website stated that the company, Dynegy, was acquired by Vistra in 2018, and the notification letter further states that Vistra Corporation is the largest competitive power generator in the company, excuse me, in the country. So, as you know, our current electric aggregation program contract will expire on December 2025 meter read dates. Also, I wanted to share with you that, as I said at the last meeting, we've been going, we've scheduled with several local service organizations to go and talk, speak to them about issue two, today, we went to the Quanis Club, the mayor, fire chief and police chief and I, and we, we had a good discussion with the membership there, a lot of good questions asked, and of course, we have the League of Women Voters scheduled for tomorrow night at seven out at the Knolls of Oxford, and I expect a good crowd there. I think the last speaking engagement will be then with Rotary the following week, and so, as I've said earlier, we have information on our front way, webpage, that gives the Q and A for issue two, the FIRE EMS Proposed Levy, and we also have the PowerPoint that I'm using to discuss this with organizations, as well as the PowerPoint that I shared with you back in March with, which has a lot of detail on it. The last thing that I want to mention then, just a reminder, it's already been mentioned that we do have our council budget work session here next Thursday, or this Thursday, October 17th, and that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing, okay. JJ?
Just a few announcements, I just wanted to wish safe travels to Lieutenant Robinson, if you don't know, he deployed with a 12-person incident management team, the Butler County State of Ohio Incident Management Team, to Pasco County, Florida, is where they ended up fulfilling missions with flooding, and, but they are wrapping up and they'll be demobilized tomorrow and start the journey home, so, got a, it'll, always good to be able to go help our neighbors, and his, the costs associated will be reimbursed by the state of Florida. We'll have a busy weekend coming up with Family Weekend, this weekend, good luck to the Miami football team taking on OU on Saturday at Yeager, and then a couple Halloween events coming up, just to make the public aware, the Uptown Trick or Treat Event will be on October 24th, between 4:30 and 6:30, with the businesses handing out candy, and there'll be a lot of pedestrians, that's always, it's always very busy, and we hope motorists travel safe, the OPRD will have games in the Uptown Park, and then at 6:30, the Lions Club Parade will happen down High Street, and then on October 31st will be our residential Trick or Treat between 5:30 and 7:30, so I just wanted to get those out there for the public listening.
Thank you, chief. Chief DeThridge? Okay, thank you. Sam? Did I miss Heidi again? You know, it's the brown coat. Thank you.
Sure.
I'll make space for you.
Just a quick update on last Thursday night at the Parking Transportation Advisory Board, and possibly Council President, just gonna mention this too, in his comments, but the, the commission, the board, I should say, decided to recommend on a route, I would call it the more urban route, rather than the rural or the, kind of the country route, and so we're working on getting a map out, and then this will be on an upcoming agenda for city council coming up here in the next few weeks. It was a well-attended meeting, there's about 50 people there at the middle school, we appreciated all the input, got a lot of comments, some things we hadn't thought of before, and we'll package all that for you all at an upcoming meeting, we'll try to schedule that at a time where it's not conflicting with budget discussions, and then for next week, there is a meeting on the development code or zoning code changes at the Presbyterian Seminary, Building 104, East Church Street, Thursday, October 24th, 6:00 PM, there's also an online survey, so on our community development page on our website, similar to the comprehensive plan, there's a survey you can fill out, there's a map you can contribute to, but that was called, the comprehensive plan was called Oxford Tomorrow, believe it or not, this is called Oxford Today. So it's just the name of the project, but it's, it's a really big project, it'll be updating all of the zoning codes and preservation policies and subdivision codes, which hasn't been done in over two decades, so, appreciate everyone's input on that, thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Jessica?
Just a few updates, Amber may speak to this as well, but we are proud to say that our first publicly funded mural has begun down at Puffer Park along the Oxford Area Trail, started today with artist Hannah Webb, and we are hoping to have, we will, we are having an artist reception on Thursday at 5:00 PM at Serviso Uptown, and all are invited. And then stay tuned to the public, very soon, we'll be doing the call for art for the city municipal building, public art that we hang in the hallways there, so that'll be going out very soon, and then on October 23rd, we will, the Environmental Commission is hosting an electrification fair at 6:00 PM at Kramer Elementary, so.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Ben?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike?
I just want to say that last Thursday, at the OKI Board Meeting, we were awarded over $100,000 so that we could put Level 2 and 3 chargers, I believe, at the municipal building and at Lot 52, and I will also say that Miami University had an application in to get chargers at the airport, and part of that project will also carry Phase 3 electric to the airport, which they desperately need to not only power those chargers but other projects, so, that was a million dollars, so, we did very well from OKI last week, so.
Good job. Alec?
We have had our first official cemetery tour of the season, that was la, on Saturday at 11:00 AM, we have two more tours, one this coming Saturday, which is full, but I'm pretty sure if you came anyways, I wouldn't tell anyone, I know the tour guide, it's me. And then, we do have plenty of spots open for the 26th, so if you're interested in a wide variety of historic residents of Oxford, come check it out, the cemetery has looked really great, thank you to Mike's crew for helping it look so wonderful, and thank you to the weather for being amazing, it should be really nice this weekend as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Chantel?
I was able to join the Housing Advisory Committee whenever they were doing the, kind of the first reading of what I call Maria's Laws for the tenant rights kind of reform package, and it was a really great discussion, thank you for being there, Jessica, and everybody else in the committee, and we had a really good discussion about the needs from the people, and the committee is amazing because they're people that have experience in this field, and they know it firsthand, and so there's a lot that they know from what they have worked with and their families to know that these changes need to happen, and so that was the overall consensus of it's moving forward, there is more discovery that needs And so that was the overall consensus of it's moving forward, there is more discovery that needs to happen as far as what ordinances are there in comparison to what is being proposed. And then shortly after, a week later, I, and this is just one person that I know, I get a call from someone who's being evicted and is very confused about why they're getting evicted. And there were certain things that, yes, they could have done better, but there are so many rules that you have to abide by to make sure you don't lose your home, especially if you don't have access to maybe a reliable car, printer, computer, internet. There's a lot of things that can be barriers to just preventing from being homeless. So beyond that, there are certain things. Then I get texts following up from social services that are like, what can we do to try to prevent this from happening so that the property manager doesn't do X, Y, Z? And I'm like, that is what these laws are for. So, yes, there's simple things that we can tweak or maybe be better about enforcing, but there are certain things that just are not there. So I look forward to seeing this through and making sure that we are having these important discussions with people with lived experiences and the people who have been helping them along the way. So thank you so much for the process and excited to keep working on it.
Thank you for your work on that. It's very important. Thank you. Amber?
I will simply second what Jessica said. We extend a warm welcome to Hannah Webb. We're excited with the mural that Joe Pressure is putting up, that's privately funded, and then this publicly funded mural. There are also Harvest Haikus up in business windows, so for all the participating businesses, we thank you. Please take the time, and for all the people who submitted Haikus, and thank you to staff for working, getting the mural ready for Hannah, putting the window clings up for the Harvest Haiku. It's all wonderful stuff. And I want you to indulge me for a moment, maybe a few minutes. I'm going to do it. So last, last week, we passed a resolution. It was a local public agency agreement between ODOT and the city of Oxford. And so I was curious to know what Chat GPT would do if I submitted one of our resolutions and asked it to turn it into a bedtime story. There is not a single whereas in this. And with all the heaviness that's going on in the world right now, I thought maybe something pleasant and light would be in order. So the story of Oxford's magical train station. Once upon a time in the busy little town of Oxford, the people had a dream. They dreamed of a magical train station where friends and families could come and go on grand adventures. The town was excited, but they knew that building such a special place would take a lot of hard work, planning, and a sprinkle of teamwork. One starry night, the wise mayor of Oxford gathered all the townspeople together under the twinkling lights of the village square. "My friends," she began. "We have a great plan to build a beautiful train station where all our loved ones can travel to far-off places and return home safely, but we cannot do it alone. We need the help of many hands and kind hearts." The mayor told the people about their friends at the Ohio Department of Transportation, who agreed to help them make their dream come true. "ODOT has promised to share the magic and help us build a station by providing eighty percent of the fairy dust we need," she said, her eyes sparkling with excitement, "but they need us to do, promise to do our part as well." The mayor smiled. A little boy named Ben, I did not make this up, a little boy named Ben, who loved trains more than anything, raised his hand. "How much fairy dust do we need to build this magical train station?" he asked. The mayor smiled at Ben and said, "The whole project will cost us two point seven-two million pieces of fairy dust." "ODOT will provide up to two million ninety-six thousand one hundred and eighty-three pieces, but we must gather the rest ourselves." The town people, the townspeople gasped. That was a lot of fairy dust, but then a kind old man with a twinkle in his eye stepped forward and said, "We can do it if we all work together. Our dream of this magical train station will come true. Let's believe in the power of our town and do our part." With that, the town agreed to form a special team led by the brave city manager and the clever service director. They promised to sign a special scroll called the LPA Agreement with ODOT to make sure everyone knew their roles in bringing the magical train station to life. As the villagers worked together, something amazing happened. The more they planned and helped, the more the train station took shape in their minds and hearts. They could almost see it standing tall with shining tracks and a cozy waiting area where friends and family could meet, and where magical trains would come to whisk them away to new adventures. The mayor said, "Now that we have a plan and a promise, the magic of our train station will begin at the earliest date allowed by the stars." And so the people of Oxford set to work, each doing their part to gather the last bits of fairy dust needed to make the train station real. They knew that when it was finally built, it would be a place full of joy, laughter, and endless journeys, connecting their town to the rest of the magical world. And from that day on, the town of Oxford was not just a place on the map. It was a place where dreams could come true, where the sound of train whistles would always remind them of what they could achieve when they worked together. And as the moon smiled down on the little town that night, everyone went to bed with hearts full of hope, knowing that the magic of Oxford's train station was on its way. The end.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you, Amber, for that reading.
Thanks for indulging me.
Yes, Jason?
Nothing for me to do.
How do you follow that?
I could wave my pixie wand to figure out how to deal with the Nelson Moro building. That's a different story. Three different things. One, I want to follow up with Sam and Jessica. So we had our Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. And as you know, discussions about the trail, particularly in the northern arc, are not simple ones because there's no single best route, and everything has pros and cons. But what I really appreciate was the time and consultation between staff and the board to think about how to approach it. And, and, and what we really ultimately did was a really great model of, that was kind of like facilitated, really informed conversation. You know, because sometimes with things like that, one person, "I don't want it here, or I don't want it there." But if we look at the map and weigh the pros and cons, and we, if we want the trail, we have to figure out, well, where do we put it? And, and weigh the pros and cons. And so the story map that Zach put together, you know, along with Etta Reed's engineering and staffs, you know, it was a really, it was, it was a brilliant way to be able to visualize what the options would look like, the pros and cons in terms of accessibility and cost and all that kind of feasibility, which then helped the public come in informed that there were pros and cons to each different thing. They could visualize what it would look like, and, and the conversation then consequently was, was really balanced and civil. People brought their A-game in terms of raising good questions. People had their own points of view. I feel like they respected other people's points of view. And then ultimately, the board was able to make, you know, the, the best recommendation possible. So I do kind of believe that a good planning process leads to a good planning outcome. I don't know that the recommendation's perfect or what the plan, but the idea that however we arrive at it is, I mean, I'm really proud of, thanks to staff. The second thing is, yes, the Environmental Commission Climate Action Steering Committee is hosting this Electrification and Efficiency Fair. If you pay attention to the world, you know the climate change is here, and it's, it's fear inducing. And then some of us have cognitive dissonance because we hear our natural gas furnace running, and we want to be part of the solution and part of the problem. So what the event is next Wednesday, six to seven-thirty, is to learn about, hey, how can you, just like the cities develop the climate action plan, how can we as our households develop a long-range plan to electrify our house to, the next time our car goes, to replace it? It doesn't need to happen right away, but you can have a goal, and, and you can learn about all the incentives that are available with the Inflation Reduction Act, which are really quite generous. It's money on the table every single year, and then talk to some local and regional vendors, solar companies, E V companies, H VAC companies, who are really enthusiastic to bring, you know, to talk to you. So that's that. And I, on, on a less happy note, but I think that, so I wanted to thank Jared Baker was a, chief, was he fire paramedic, Jared? You know, how many years of service to the city of Oxford?
Probably thirteen or fourteen.
Yeah, so I got to travel along with Jared when I did my short little stint, and, and was so impressed with his dedication to the city of Oxford. You know, he had been here a long time. He clearly loved working for the city of Oxford. But I saw Sir's hand, like when I was seeing Jared, he was coming off a twelve-hour shift, that he had to come in early, tack on to a twenty-four-hour shift, and while I was there, because somebody couldn't make it, he was mandated to do another twelve. And, and you could just see, like, having, calling up and saying, hey, I can't take the kids this weekend on the Boy Scout trip. And right then and there, if I predicted, you know, he's leaving the city of Oxford and he's going to another agency, right, you know? And, and how many people have we lost?
Six.
Six. So watching your talented staff in your fire department wither in front of your eyes because of lack of resources is a really hard thing to watch. I wish him the best of luck. I mean, we have been really fortunate, and I don't blame anyone who leaves. I just hope that people in November think about the human costs of under-resourcing your fire department, because we could be left with not enough staff to be there when you need them, you know? And other communities are benefiting from our losses. You know, we're training people, and they're going elsewhere. So I, I wish Jared the best. It was really a pleasure to work with him. And so, yeah, there is a League of Women Voters. We should just put on that, that is tomorrow night?
Tomorrow at seven.
Tomorrow night at seven at the Knowles of Oxford. So if you have any questions about issue two, whether from the financial side or the human side, you know, come and, and share your concerns and thoughts, so please do attend.
Thank you very much. That was one of the things I wanted to remind people of, so I think an extra reminder doesn't hurt. The League of Women Voters is sponsoring our major public meeting that's open to everyone. And I know that we've gotten a lot of questions and concerns, and when are we going to have a public meeting? Well, this is it. And we've obviously had public meetings here at, at council. We have been meeting with service clubs. And this is a, an opportunity for anybody in the community to find out all the detail they want. They can also go to our website, as the city manager pointed out. Really, all the data is there. It's very transparent. There's no hidden information anywhere that is not being shared. So I hope that people who are interested will take advantage of that opportunity. So that's seven P M. out at the Knowles of Oxford. Also, it is time every year to remind people, because they will ask. It'll be on Oxford Talk. When is trick or treating? It's on Halloween. When's Halloween going to be? October thirty-first, five-thirty to seven-thirty. That's when it always is in Oxford. Okay. Having that out of the way, I want to remind everyone to vote. Early voting has started, and Election Day will be our next meeting. So I hope that, like you, like I did, and some of the rest of you did, people will get out and vote, go early. It doesn't take very long, and it's a very easy process at the Board of Elections in Hamilton. If not, vote on Election Day. Mail in your ballot, whatever, but please vote and make your positions heard. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We are adjourned.